Good evening, this is the City Council, City Council Work Meeting. The date's dated, it's December the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the time is six-thirty. This meeting has been held by the City's newspaper, the Council of Public Safety Act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Swan, Mayor, Davenport.
President.
Demolero.
Here.
Thomas.
President.
Kamalina.
President.
Korea.
Trassen.
Tex.
Sistro.
President.
Paul and Simmons.
Motion.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
And now we go to the executive session. Time to solicit.
Good evening, everyone. The purpose of the executive session tonight is attorney-client privilege and matters of contract negotiation. And I believe we'll be here for close to a mile.
So, I need a motion to go into the executive session.
Motion, motion. To the executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Still noted.
Okay, now we're in the second, now we're in the executive session. As, as the solicitor, no. Mr. President, would you repeat everyone's question?
Good evening, all. The City Council, um, City Council's submission of executive session, during executive session, City Council discussed matters regarding contract associations and matters relating to public professional services. The City Council's decision will be made available to the public at our reorganization meeting scheduled for January the fourth, twenty twenty-three, at six P.M. held with the Business Board.
Next decision. Agenda review.
First on the agenda is Order Number Twenty-four. Second reading, public hearing will be held during regular session, providing the execution of a financial agreement under the long-term tax exemption law with the redevelopment for the redevelopment area known as Block One, I'm sorry, Block One, Block Two fifty-five on the tax map. Resolution one ninety-nine, creating a current account temporary budget for twenty twenty-three.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred, creating a sewer utility temporary budget for twenty twenty-three.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred-one, authorizing implementation of a corrective action plan for the twenty twenty-one annual order.
Any questions?
Yes, question. Um, this corrective action plan, it came from the audit, correct?
Yes.
And, um, um, Mr. Chair, did you sit down with, um, administration to go over this or to come up with that? And the reason why I'm asking, because it just says, whereas it is the desire of the City Council, of the City of Pleasantville, to ensure the operations of the city are monitored in an efficient, I mean, effective and efficient manner to benefit the citizens of the city. And I know this, I guess, when you all talked about it in committee?
And we all attached to the recommendation. I'm sorry? Attached to the recommendation. And so the resolution is the government body has reviewed the recommendations.
Correct.
And you're letting the state know that you reviewed it by resolution approval.
So my question is, this is the corrective action plan, and I was just wondering if the president sat with you, well, you know, mayor and B.A. to go over this plan, or was it in committee?
Neither. I think at full council, it was explained that a corrective action plan had been put in place, our finance department, and that's what we've done. And it was only one finding from the action plan, it specified to that one issue, so it's not a comprehensive plan of city auditing. So it's the one correction that we spoke about, and how it needed to be corrected, corrected, and that's what we have before you today.
Okay, it's just that the verbiage to me is like, I'm just trying to get an understanding, like it says, um, to ensure the operations of the city are monitored, but monitored by whom? The CFO, the B.A., the mayor, us?
All of us are responsible, right? So that is the standard language for the resolution for the, the audit itself. But as a council, you're responsible, this is why you have finance committee meetings for you to review the finances of the city. This is not talking about the finances, this is specifically talking about the finding that was founded through the audit process, which we've come up with a corrective action plan that is before you today.
Okay, it's just the verbiage.
Yeah, it's the standard verbiage, yeah.
Didn't we somewhat discuss this at a finance meeting?
We discussed it at your, at the council meeting, and, you know, before it got to you all.
I know we discussed the city's audit, but it was just this corrective action plan, like, this is new to me, and it's just that this verbiage, and you're saying that this is the verbiage that, you know?
Standard.
The standard verbiage, so it's just that this isn't, I mean, this doesn't sit right with me, this verbiage.
I mean, I, I don't know how else to express it. Yeah, I really don't know how to express it.
I mean, what was your reason? Because that's because City Council really had nothing to do with putting this together?
Correct.
Because it says City Council, and I think that's what she said.
Right, because if we vote on this tonight, then now we're held accountable for whatever finding or, not, not, I'm sorry, not findings, but we're held accountable for anything that happens in the future.
It's not about what happens in the future, it's about the corrective act, action findings, right? That one finding, which you all, as a council, we spoke to you about what that finding is. We're required by the state to come up with a plan each time there's a finding. We came up with the corrective action plan for the finding, which is before you today. So I'm not really sure, right, are you, I'm not really sure what is the issue, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get it.
It's just the, the verbiage. I mean, this is.
Maybe let's explain the finding again and its action, and maybe that would be helpful.
Fair.
I think there's something in the corrective action plan that based on what our auditors had found for us, that they thought there were certain areas that we needed correction in. And what this correction of action plan is mirroring what they want us to do, meaning bouncing all to General Ledger and everything else that's involved with it. This is part of my conversation with the auditor, based on what the finding was in the audit, and we do a corrective action plan, and yes, we will follow their recommendation and make sure that these things are taken care of. There's, like, you're playing one thing, the minor thing, and we will take care of that, and we have the state saying, we will look at and we will take care of. And what you're, I think what council is looking at, approving it, yes, they looked at the corrective action plan, they expect the CFO and administration to take care of the finding.
To take care of the finding?
The finding.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was, that was found in the audit.
And this is how we want to take care of it, from what I read, this corrective action plan?
Yeah, just, just expect that, we expect to take care of that one, yes. By doing what the auditor suggested, and bouncing the General Ledger and all the other accounts that they, that have to be taken care of.
So it's not saying that it's being corrected, it's saying that we're putting in a plan truth corrected, and you guys have, have, are looking at the plan.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
Next.
Resolution two hundred-two, approving the sale of property known as Block One thirty-five, Lot Eight, and nineteen point zero-two, also known as one seventy-two dash one eighty-six North Main Street and one eighty-four North Main Street, in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred-three, approving the sale of property known as Block Two Hundred Ninety, Lot Twenty-nine, also known as one forty-five East Alala Road, in the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred-four, approving the sale of property known as Ninety-five, Lot Twenty, also known as eleven Clinton Avenue, in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions?
So as you know, these four properties that you are looking at on the council agenda, two of, Resolution two oh two, two oh three, two oh four, and two oh five, were all property, city-owned properties that went through the auction process. So the first two, two oh two and two oh three, we believe that the bid amount is sufficient and correlates with the assessment of the properties. However, when you get to Resolution two oh four and two oh five, the bid amount is fifty-five hundred dollars. Those properties are assessed above that amount, so my question to council today, if we take into consideration, is this something that you want the city to pull today, or do you want to sell it today at the recommended bid, bid price? The eleven Clinton Avenue, in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars, is currently assessed at twenty-two thousand dollars, so let's start there.
Your recommendation.
I say public, I mean, five thousand is worth, it's recommended at, how much?
Is assessed at twenty?
At twenty-two? That's like getting away. Is that the same with two oh five?
Yeah, I'll give you those amounts when I get to it, but let's do two oh four first. And I'll yield to the purpose, uh, city solicitor, as to how you determine whether you should pull it table and reset it back for auction, but I want to make sure that you know what the assessment amount is.
Who can, after, excuse me, after you explain Resolution two oh six hundred, they can group it together and make a motion to table, uh, those resolutions two oh four and two oh five.
Okay, so two oh five and sixteen Cambria Avenue, the recommend, the bid amount from the auction is fifty-five hundred dollars, the assessment of that, of, amount is seventeen thousand two hundred dollars.
Seventeen thousand, seven hundred. Is this one's pulled again?
With that being said, um, I'm going to need the motion to table.
Motion, second.
For, for the record, we're, uh, tabling Resolution two oh four and two oh five. Motion by Davenport, in second.
May.
We do a roll call for this one. Do you want to do it now, or? Okay, okay. Uh, by council, we're going to be doing this at the, uh, regular meeting, so who the motion, but as of now, it's supposed to be tabled.
Yes. How do we put these back up? Do they just come back next year for auction, see if we can get the assessed value of them?
Yeah, we'll probably, um, put a minimum requirement down, because this is first time we've been asked, because now that we know what they're trying to purchase it for, we'll put a minimum amount, so that at least we can get the assessed amount.
Is, is the auction only once a year, or?
No, it's, it's how often you guys determine it to be, that was our first time around, and we did pretty good.
Okay, any more questions?
Resolution two zero six, two hundred and six, authorizing the mayor and city council to execute an agreement with the County of Atlantic Municipal Alliance Grant Program.
Questions?
Resolution two hundred seven, authorizing submission of application for the New Jersey Department of Human Services Division on Mental Health and Addiction, addition, addiction services grant funding. I know.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred eight, support for suitability of cannabis business, E Quality Cannabis LLC.
Any questions?
Question. Do we have someone here from this company? I don't know if there's any representation today from E Quality Cannabis LLC.
No representation here today, but this is a micro business, um, and as you know, with the state law, is that, uh, basically their municipality does not have jurisdiction over micro businesses if you allow cannabis in your town, as long as the businesses have qualified zoning area, and this business is.
Did they pay the application?
Yes, ma'am, but none of these micro businesses will come before you without the applicable application fee in place.
Okay. Did anyone from council talk to this? I'm sorry?
Did I?
Oh, no, I thought you said something.
No, when I said something, you looked at me, I didn't say anything, I don't know anything about them.
Okay, did anyone from council, no?
Is the application process, um, again, the city, unfortunately, because you allow cannabis in your town, you don't have jurisdiction over the micro applications, as long as it meets the state qualifications and meets your zoning requirements. So the application came in to the city, was reviewed, the court only, um, their application is in with the state, they have a conditional license based on to the resolution being passed tonight.
It's just that, um, previously, we had the two, they came in front of us, so I just, it is like somebody would have been there.
No need.
I'm done.
Next.
Resolution two hundred nine, providing for budget transfer for twenty twenty-two appropriations of the sewer fund.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred ten, providing for budget transfers for twenty twenty-two appropriations of the current fund.
Any questions?
Resolution two hundred eleven, adopting and certifying the update and review of various sections of personnel policies and procedures.
Any questions?
Next is review of the bill list.
Evening. We'll look at the bill list for checks that were written in the last council meeting, this council meeting. Most of the ones that are on the top were omitted, were just, we just kind of pressured, had to move forward to pay them so they wouldn't be delinquent. Pressure contest one, they were calling, they wanted to know where the payment was, it just hadn't been processed, so we processed that one. Under the wire transfers, there was a, a small debt, that's a note for the township of West Windsor Hill. Then we have payroll of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the last contest payroll, and then you'll see one for a hundred thousand, one for thirty thousand. They were transferred, made from the city current fund, one, thirty thousand made into the city general capital fund, as part of the budget, and then the other hundred thousand dollars were made into what we call a compensated balances fund, which we can use to offset some of the expenses when people retire. Right now, with just a hundred thousand in there, we only have like two hundred thousand dollars in there. We try to put money in there every year, um, but because of the tightness of the budget, it's so hard to move money over. So we, uh, it's part of the budget this year, that we knew people were going to start retiring, we wanted to put money aside, kind of like a saving for, uh, it doesn't come out of the budget, when people do retire, it'll come out of this fund.
So the West Windsor Township, what was that? What is that?
What is it?
The West Windsor Township, the one at the town.
Oh, yeah, there's a, a small debt. Some of the townships, where we have small bonds, or small bond situation notes, um, our bond, bond council will offer them out for bid. And West Windsor Township, this was, I believe, some, something from four years ago, where we bought some information, or things for the police department and their vehicles, it was like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, this should be, will pay off that final one. But it was, West Windsor Township gave us numbers that were, um, better than any else we've ever received. Be looking to, no, looking for bills that, um, looking to be approved tonight. On the first page, this is A every N, this is, uh, police training, with shotgun training for the police department, a thousand dollars. You'll see some AE stone for, uh, patch, dry patch and cold patch reviews for roads. If you go over to page two, three quarters of the way down, you'll see some Cooper Lemonson bills, they vary anything from some labor law to the regular, uh, free and count to seventeen, thirteen thousand dollars is for the month of November and halfway through, at least to, uh, December tenth. And then we have, uh, some escrow billings, as well as, uh, we bring attorney in for P and D, this is their individual billing for, for planning and development capital. If you look on page three, halfway down to the Everett Bridge, this is software used by our police department for some of their operations. And next to there is one on that page, twenty-four thousand dollars, that was, um, this was kind of originated back in September, with S H I to, to supply all the computer operations inside of Carton. The computer, the whole nine yards, all the, just, uh, it's expensive, six, like six thousand dollars per, per vehicle. There's four of them? There's four of them, yes. If we skip over to page five, you'll see our monthly contribution to the school board of eight hundred and fourteen thousand. If you want to go with page six, you'll see, uh, assuming triple R lighting, as you go up in Down Main Street, you'll see the lights that were put up by credit, this is money that was put out by the neighborhood improvement program, and this is a year, this is the second half of the payment. I don't know if you've seen it, but I think they look outstanding, I think most of us, I've driven up in Down Main Street, you can take a look at it. And then the last few ones on page six, going into page seven, we have a plan, we have a medical opt-out for employees, if they're opting out of our medical insurance, they can hit up to, up to twenty-five percent of the, with a normal cost, to a maximum of five thousand dollars, but that's only if they opt out and their spouse does not have state health benefits. If there's, if we have state health benefits and the spouse has state health benefits, they get no opt-out money. But if, if, if I was covered by Aetna and my wife had state health benefits, and I went state health benefits, I would get the opt-out because it's not state health benefits. And it's a maximum of five thousand dollars, it's, it's a maximum of twenty-five percent of cost, or five thousand dollars, whatever the smaller number is. That's where you'll see some twenty-nine hundred dollars, so five thousand, for the coverage of parent-child, just, just single coverage. And this is, we do this, look here.
Mr. Luther, can I ask you a question about the triple R lighting? Is that for purchase, or is that, are we renting that, or?
This is ours.
This is ours, okay.
In fact, the way the programmers, we buy it, they store it, they install it.
Can we add? I, can I just? So these payouts, um, for the insurance?
Yes.
That five thousand dollars is five percent, so it would be twenty-five thousand dollars?
Twenty-five percent or five thousand, whatever the smaller number is.
So is it a savings to the city?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Because the family coverage for the city is close to thirty thousand dollars.
And do they submit anything for reimbursement?
Well, we know, no, we know if they're on, on the plan internet, because we look at the billings, and if they're on state health benefits billings, and you also send something to HR, and yet I am covered, and there's proof of coverage elsewhere. You want?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Um, I just have a question on Resolution two oh seven, not a question, but, um, Resolution two oh seven. At the bottom, it says City Council on this sixth day of June twenty twenty-two, so I guess that's a type form.
Okay.
We have puppet portion. Puppet portion, we just finished the bill.
This is puppet portion, able for the public to just pick on, agenda items, agenda items. With the exception of, of twenty-four, twenty-five. Two minutes at the mic, and, uh, two minutes at the mic, and also.
This is puppet portion, this is, this is puppet portion of the agenda. Okay.
Is this on? No, it's not on. I really don't need it anyway. I'm going to speak on the pilot, which is on the agenda. Mr. President, it may not sound like that as I get started, but that, I want to build some foundation, please. It may take a little more time, you can weigh the measure on it, right, you can weigh. My name is, for those that don't know me, simply it's Bill Christmas, as the holidays come. I have very proudly spent approximately forty-five years serving the city in many different capacities, planning, building, school, board, and I spent twelve years on City Council. You might think, I will say it first, I am positive of the pilot. You might say to yourself while he was on City Council, I stood in this very same spot and spoke against the sewage. So it isn't that, like the old boy system is supported. The foundation for the pilot, number one is, we have a very good city here. I don't know if you folks really, really know how good a town we really have. We're enlisted with the city, with the state, as one of the fifteen cities on the move. We carry an excellent bond rating, that's why we can get the bonding like we do. We have a lot of developments moving into the town. For you folks that don't know it, how many here know what's going up on, where they tore the trees all down, where the old campground was between Walgreens and Popeyes? Do you know what's going in there? Did you see it? Mod wash, car wash, very, very modern, upscale car wash. People want to do business in Pleasantville. Now, let's talk about the business they want to do in Pleasantville. We're having Christmas season coming now. Many of you and all of us are going to the stores to buy. Best Buy, Walmart, but what are they doing to get you to come there? They got a sale on this, they got a coupon on that, to get you to come to their business and do business. How in the world this pilot ever got started, I don't know, whether it was the cities or the property people, the developers who want to come in, I don't know, but it's here, this pilot is here. And these developers, if you're not going to offer them something, they're going to go to the town that offers the pilot. It's the same deal, if you don't give a little, you're not going to get anything. Now let's talk about what you get. With the amount of taxes that they will pay at the low end, of course, you know this is a rising scale, thirty years is long, by the way, but this is a rising scale, they keep paying more. The first three years is approximately a million dollars in the bank vaulters for the city in our pocket. By the time you get to fifteen years, it's a multitude of million dollars that they're going to pay. The bottom line, folks, is ninety percent of a pie is better than nothing. Thank you.
Do you want us to report?
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Jones, Pleasantville resident, and I have prepared my comments so it shouldn't take long. Now, it would be erroneous to think my concerns are against development in the city. I believe this project could benefit the city greatly. My concern is fundamentally one of tax fairness. In the agreement between Spideglass and the City of Pleasantville, it says, paraphrasing, In the agreement between Spyglass and the city of Pleasantville, it says, paraphrasing, the annual service charges and new real property taxes allows maximum development.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Which, which, I checked out, I didn't ask to refer to.
The college, the ordinance. Okay, should I continue? Okay. The annual service charges and new real property taxes allow maximum development of property and is therefore in the best interest of the city. That's also an application. But then I referred to the master plan, the two thousand and eight master plan. And it says there, the city has determined that land, such as though Pleasantville High School site, if sold and developed, the area could provide the city with much-needed funds in the form of purchase price as well as our ongoing revenues in the form of significant tax ratables. The master plan also says, as a principle, to utilize all the tools and powers available for the city to support, not just create economic development in Pleasantville. The, the master plan states, and objective is to generate new tax ratables and maximize tax revenue by returning to productive use lands which are currently unutilized, which is what we have on our day front. However, this thirty-year tax abatement, how does this thirty-year tax abatement maximize and provide significant tax ratables when we don't receive them or receive twenty-five percent of what we otherwise should get over that thirty-year period? That's the question I would like to ask. How is it maximizing our tax revenues when we're giving away seventy-five percent of the revenues we would otherwise be getting? I don't get it. Anyone have an answer?
Yeah, we're, we're going, there's a public hearing, um, in the regular meeting. We'll make sure that we try to answer most of your questions there. So if you can just present your questions and your comments here, and then the public hearing will try to answer most of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with a public?
Good evening, everyone. I just had a few questions on a different ordinance, a resolution. For resolution two hundred, creating a sewer utility temporary budget, is that standard? So you do it every year?
Yes, sir.
And what does that entail?
Tell me.
What does that entail as far as?
We, we can do a temporary budget based on twenty-five percent of prior year budgets. In order to do that, we have to have a budget by January first, otherwise we haven't, we can't operate. So town, so can, we set up a temporary budget for sewer as well as current fund in order to pay bills after January first.
Are they in tandem when you do those budgets?
No.
The current fund and the?
We, we do the temporary budget, but they're two individual, individual budgets.
And as far as ordinance number twenty-four, um, do you have the, um, do you have the forecasting model? The pilot forecasting model?
I'm not involved with it, no.
Does anyone have the forecasting model for ordinance number twenty-four?
I think we can go over there in our, in our public hearing.
Is there a copy here?
I don't know.
The city's, the city's forecasting.
The city has the information. Is there copies available to the public today? Probably not, but we'll try to answer your questions and get the documents to be according.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just making sure, you, the city conducted a forecasting model?
Yeah, if we're, if we're talking about projections and all of that, I know those words are interchangeable, yes, we did.
Okay. And then you said, like, how long, like, within seven days?
Well, I believe once the information is unveiled to the solicitor for that, but.
So right now, the ordinance is in draft form, so any negotiation is still subject to attorney client and it's not subject to release yet. Once it's released, then it'd be subject to public.
So there was a forecasting model conducted?
Well, I heard Ma Payton say that there was a projection of payments for the future, and that's the, is that?
No, 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 not like the company gave y'all, what the city did.
Yeah, we.
That's why I asked the CFO, because he's the numbers guy.
Yeah, we have done that work and actually it's based on what we want to see them pay us and what they've agreed to possibly bet. I mean, we can, we can do any kind of projection you want. And we want a million dollar a year, but they're not going to pay a million dollars a year. The projection is based on during just data revenue and what we see and whether it's agreeable or not.
According to the state model?
This is our individual model, or what state does, which is what we do.
Okay.
Good evening, this is Dale Archer, Pleasantville. Council President, procedures for public comment during Pleasantville City Council meetings was, I guess, drafted by the attorney and it states each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. That's what it says black and white from the city's attorney. In reference to pilot program, there's a section number four zero, four point zero three, annual service charge amount. There's also, uh, is it Spyglass and residential? I would call it a spreadsheet. It speaks about the pilot program for thirty years. According to the paperwork, it says for, uh, year one, the equal amount shall be zero. That's right so far. Year two, it states, an amount equal to eighteen hundred dollars. On the spreadsheet, it has nothing. Year three, let me back up for a second. Eighteen hundred dollars times eight, one hundred and eighty units is three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That's under column year three. Okay, um, year three, the amount, let me back up. Year two, the amount is nineteen hundred dollars. Nineteen hundred dollars times one hundred and eighty units is three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That's year two. That's in column three. This is the paperwork from the project proposal, I guess, whatever you want to call it. Year three, it says two hundred, I'm sorry, two thousand dollars per residential unit. That's year three. Year three on here, I'm sorry, year three times two thousand, one hundred and eighty units is three hundred and sixty thousand. Three hundred and sixty thousand is under column year five. Got discrepancy going on. Year four, an amount equal to twenty-one hundred dollars per residential unit. Uh, that's four times, okay, twenty-one hundred times one hundred and eighty units, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for year four is on the column year six. We got discrepancy. Next question. Ms. Farnell Board, uh, interesting conversation in the last meeting in reference to, why is it that according to the urban renewal entities disclosure information, section one type says original certification, section two states, uh, the project document and so forth. Section three, add a check column with no housing units. I, I looked it online, I heard the gentleman's explanation, um, it didn't really sit too well with me. Um, it also says if you check the boxes one to two, use section four and six. Section four states redevelopment plan information, the housing project, right? He has total numbers of units in A, doesn't apply. Okay, then it says, go back again, if you did one and two, go to section six or seven. Okay, six says, the project is re, is a, is a new construction. That's all it says. So going back to the main point, if it says units should be checked and units aren't checked, now if you give an explanation why it's not checked, and you say it's based on some law or whatever might be of some reason or way we do business, but it's not in black and white, that's not sound. When you're doing business, that's not sound. Next thing, I'm talking fast because I only got three minutes. Here's next thing I found, just stumbled. Pleasantville named Scarborough as a site developer early this year. Now, this goes back with, um, with Twitter was involved. Scarborough has since turned its over to Spyglass, who we have right now. The Pleasantville L C and in-house company. As part of the interest city agreement, Pleasantville will work with Ocean City and accept seventy thousand cubic yards of clean soil dredge from the Greek and Garma Bay, Twitter says. Pleasantville will use the soil to build up the old high school site by five feet to make it suitable for redevelopment. Ocean City will pay Pleasantville five point ninety-five million dollars to accept the soil, but Pleasantville must pay the money to Scar, Scarborough, which is handling the dredging. Very interesting. Um, can someone answer what I had set up? A hundred thousand dollars now, because of the time. Can anyone answer? See you now.
You did say it really fast.
I know, I have to.
We're going to try to answer it in the public hearing for you, okay?
Now, just one question on that. Why are we answering in the public hearing? Normally we always answer stuff according to items, yeah.
Because, because there is a public hearing for this specific item and that's where you really do Q and A.
No, I need to understand it, so you can correct me. The public hearing always been after we did the, um, line items. The public, I'm, I'm sorry, if I'm using line items, you understand what I'm saying? Like if it's number two, oh, you have anything to say about number two? We spoke of number two, we got an answer. But we went to public portion, that was something totally different. You can talk about the moon and the suns if you want to.
Yeah, because you're, you're talking about an ordinance rather than a resolution. So when there's a second reading on an ordinance, there's a public hearing for that particular ordinance at your second reading.
Only on the second reading, that's why we're going through this.
Yes.
So, Mr. President, are we three minutes, we good, right? No, no, but I'm just saying, you three minutes according to what?
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Okay, which been, no, no, bye. Okay, three minutes, everybody, is it black and white, you need to hear his way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Linda Carrington, Pleasantville. At the last meeting, I posed a question to the council regarding who would absorb the financial responsibility in the event that the, um, company went belly up or was defunct or went default or whatever. And the council president said it would be their responsibility. I would have been inclined to believe that, but because I know that there's particulars that have been misrepresented, I looked it up myself. So it says this, council president, no, they're not responsible for it. It says the company is subject to the provisions with respect to Pleasantville. Now, this is a provision that Pleasantville is going to give the company. Uh, they're going to give them to alleviate any financial burdens. This is what Pleasantville is going to do. In, in case it has any type of financial difficulties. And this is if they have a result of mismanagement, a result of mortgage foreclosure, a fiscal, legal, or managerial misconduct. Pleasantville is going to assume the responsibility with the local finance board to assume the responsibility of this company. This is in, this is in the contract. This is in the contract that you said they would assume the responsibility. So my question is, why should the taxpayers be the ultimate insurers of a financial company, of a company of this magnitude if they have any financial, uh, 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 problems? Why are we assuming the cost? It says it in the contract that Pleasantville will assume that. They are allowing this provision. Now, I understand, I heard Mr. Christmas. I am not against the project. But I am against multi-million dollar companies coming in and paying no taxes. They're paying less than a half a million dollars on a forty million dollar bribe, on a forty million dollar income. That doesn't make sense to me. It just doesn't make sense. And then we're offering, Mr. Christmas said, we got to give something. Well, it looks like we're giving everything. We're, we're, we're giving them a tax abatement. If, if, if it fails, we're going to give them, we're going to ensure that they're not, we're going to assume their responsibility. That's what it says in the contract. Why are we insuring them? Why are we yet giving them something else? And what are we going to get besides higher taxes because we have to support the multi-million dollar countries? Help me. If any man lacks wisdom, let us ask. I lack wisdom on this. Can somebody help me? Business administrator? The mayor? I'm just telling you, this is in the contract. The rich get richer and the poor gets raped. And our council president said, when I asked the question, he says, they will. Did you read this? Does anybody have a copy for the council, for the council president to read? Because he's telling me straight up, they will. And I remember because you were quiet there, they will. They won't. Pleasantville will. All of my fellow residential people, we're going to carry that burden. If there's a, if there's another Sandy, who's going to, who's going to, who's going to absorb the expense? We are. We're already overtaxed. I believe Pleasantville is all that in a bag of chips like Mr. Christmas said. Somebody's got to pay for it. Is anybody going to answer my question or this has to be deferred to the question answered team to?
Yeah, we, so all of the questions, um, related to this ordinance is what we want to try to address them at the public hearing session.
That's going to be advertised?
No, no, tonight.
Oh.
We have to go through the regular, this is, this is the work session. Once we get, are we in a work session?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the work session. Once we get through the work session and go into the regular meeting, the clerk will call public comments for, uh, this item and then we'll try and get these questions answered for you guys, tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with a public?
Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey. Thank you, uh, city council president for the time. But I just have a, a question. Was there a tax abatement expert that was used to go over this paperwork to properly manage this paperwork to tell you exactly what's going to happen with this tax abatement program? Has any expert on taxes or economic welfare, have they been consulted for this project?
We believe there are, are professionals that we have in place. This is not the first, um, pilot or tax abatement that the city has looked at. So we do have professionals in place to look at these items, so it's not a discretion of council and others, but we have professionals in place to go through those.
But would they, those professionals be considered experts on tax abatement programs in New Jersey?
I would finish to say that they have quite a bit of experience and the knowledge to, uh, to, to look at these agreements.
I, experience is great, but I'm talking about experts. Because I guess my following question would be, um, if, has Pleasantville gone into previous pilot agreements?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and have they been successful? How have they been measured? Which ones have been successful and which ones have not been successful?
I think that is a question that is not for this forum, because it depends on what you believe as being successful. Um, I certainly agree with.
Well, I'm, I'm, I want you and the mayor to tell me which ones have been successful or the city council.
All of them that are in place, we believe.
They've been successful. And how do you measure that success?
I'm not, I'm not going back and forth with you about these, uh, this Q and As, particularly about this ordinance. Um, as I spoke to others, we're going to try to answer your questions going to public hearing.
Okay, because as, as I'm sitting in the audience, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but as I'm sitting in the audience, this is essentially a gamble with taxpayer funds. And I'm, I, I just want some proof, I just want some expertise. I want someone to, that sit down and talk to the public and say, look, these pilot programs work. Because I'm not an expert, so, and I understand that this may have to go to Q and A, but, you know, where is the evidence that pilot programs have worked in New Jersey? You say you have experts that have reviewed these tax abatement programs, but can someone bring me an expert from state government to tell me that these tax pilot work, programs have worked? Where's the research? Give me one research paper that has shown that these Tyler, uh, pilot programs have worked. That's all I'm asking for.
I don't, I don't know that the state would have something in place if they didn't think that it worked. So that might not be the right question to get to where you're going. But if you're patient with us to let us get to the public hearing, I think most of your questions will be answered.
And then I don't mean to be rude, but there is a report that was published in two thousand and ten by the state comptroller to the Christie administration. And at the end of his, uh, report, it states, tax abatements are often costly and controversial and are difficult to implement. Cities should seek alternatives, like enhancing local infrastructure, creating training, improving local projects, local beautification projects, instead of seeking tax abatements. So I'm not a tax abatement expert, but I went to the experts and this stuff is published online and free for anybody to look up. So I really hope, I keep coming to the city council meeting and asking for your advice and your input and to see if you've reached out to any scholars or experts, because I'm not an expert. But I hope this research would have been done before you sit down and vote on it. Because the research is there. Pilot programs have not worked in the state of New Jersey and you're going to vote on another one tonight. Please, don't listen to me, listen to the experts. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else with a problem?
Good evening, council. David Carrington. Back in September 1st, 2020, also known as the final hearing. At that time, Mr. Genetti had explained that the property that is located is an opportunity zone, which will allow the developer to provide market rate rental units and commercial space and create, maybe create, perhaps, the highest ratable in the city once developed. Okay? According to the IRS, the IRS's website, opportunity zones offer tax benefits to investors who elect to temporarily defer tax on capital gains if they timely invest those gains, those gain amounts in a qualified opportunity fund, QOF. Okay? My question is, how do the tax benefits to the developer benefit the youth? Benefit the senior citizens? Benefits this city? How does it benefit the youth? How does it benefit? How would this benefit the developers' benefit? How would it benefit, okay, our senior citizens? The city of Pleasantville, how's it going to benefit? If you go into this deal, how is it going to benefit?
I think the chair is pointing to me to repeat the same thing that I've been saying. These are excellent questions. And we are... I hope that we're taking notes so that we can try to get room during the public hearing. So it'll be answered at that time.
Tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Final answer?
Anyone else in the public?
I have a question. Because this is a little disgusting. What is it that we can talk about now that we can get a response to? Because I remember being at a school board meeting when this same thing happened, where they were instructed not to talk to parents and they were instructed not to talk to the people answering questions. And this is what it looks like I'm looking at. I don't like it.
So we're in a work session. So this is typically what happens. We go over the agenda and then we allow, right after the work session, public portion for agenda items. The difference between an ordinance and a resolution is that an ordinance by law has two readings, of which the third one was held the last meeting on December 5th. This is the second reading of which a public hearing happened. And during that time is when we invite the public to come in and speak about that. So you're not wrong to speak about an agenda item because ordinance 24 is an agenda item. It just has its own public hearing.
Okay, so it's an agenda item. But what's the point of speaking about it if nobody's speaking back?
So...
My other question is this. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I'm going to be rude to anybody. But my other question is this. Tonight, y'all did executive session. Y'all did interviews. We standing out there in the lobby with nowhere to sit, just standing up. Why can't you have your executive sessions in City Hall in that big conference room that you got upstairs at 2:00 in the afternoon? And that's the proper time to interview people? So that when we come over here and I just stand... I get up 6:00 in the morning, every morning to go to work. And then I come home and I don't have dinner because I'm waiting for y'all to finish playing games with me like y'all the cat and I'm the mouse. I don't appreciate it. I think it's condescending. And I think that you playing my intelligence cheap and ain't nothing dumb about me. So I think some things need to be changed. I don't like this game. Be forthright. If you want to do what you want to do anyway, say I'm going to do what I'm going to do anyway. But don't try to treat people like they're children or insignificant and that they don't matter because our salaries pay you. I don't have this kind of time. This is wasteful time. And I don't have a lot of time to waste. I have a sick child that I could be attending to. Instead of sitting here being ignored and treated like the dirt on the bottom of your shoe. That's all I got to say. I'm over.
Ms. Brown, I have to speak on that.
Please do.
First of all, I apologize to all of you for having to stand out there. And in the future, we will... And I'm saying as mayor that in the future, maybe it should be us that go somewhere else and you all stay in here.
That's right.
And then you leave right away. But we... I do apologize on behalf of all of us. I feel safe saying that we're not being insensitive. It just wasn't a thought. It's just, it just wasn't a thought tonight. And I do appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yes, but it feels so degraded.
I know. But I don't want you to feel that way that with dirt on the bottom of your shoe or anything. It really was just... And it was... It just, we just didn't think of it. But we will in the future. And I want you all to be...
Interviewing interviews during the daytime. Those people want a job, they'll get here.
We do it during the day. We do it...
But not...
In the future, though, we will attempt to be the ones to leave the room.
Or just don't leave the room. Have your meeting at a different time. Because we're not a party that has nothing to do with us. You tell us to come out at this time, but then we got to stand out there for an hour and a half, two hours, while you do this that has nothing to do with us. Do your thing on your day and do our thing on a day that's for us. That's right. That's it. I'm not trying to be unreasonable. I don't want to be rude. I'm not trying to be ignorant or to anybody. I promise you that.
I don't feel that you are, but I...
But I just think this is very inconsiderate. Some of us leave children, small children, at home. Some of us leave sick children at home. And we work all day. Yep, we get it. With some of your children. How about a net?
Good evening, council president, mayor, people.
Good evening.
Anyone else? Council people. Douglas Harbin, zoning board member, county meeting member, board chief. Just wanted to address the ordinance 24 a little bit. The issue with the tax abatement is technically, if you want to speak, the property as is, is collecting revenue. It should be collecting revenue for the city in taxes. So it's not up to us in the council to appease the developer and to give the abatements to build our property. Understand that the city wants development and new places for people to live, stuff like that. But it's not up to us to, the property bought as is, for almost less than 10% of the market value of the property. And then again, let's see, you have 180 homes are coming in. You got to look at $25,000 now to child to educate. So we have to look at the expense coming to the city. Also, look at the part of 180 homes, say $2,000 a piece in property tax. That's $260,000 a year revenue we're missing out. And for 30 years of abatement, that's like $10.8 million to see what we're giving away, potentially to make from that property. So I just asked the city to maybe table this as it is and look into it, look at the value and the cost is going to cost the city. Instead of the development and the business that's coming to the city, paying, helping the city get bigger and financially stable, it's going to be costing us. And as a taxpayer, that's not acceptable. All right, thank you. Good holiday in America.
Jerry King, City of Pleasantville. Former firefighter, all that. Good evening. It's a tough job you guys got. I don't know how you're doing. I'd like to speak on the pilot program real quick. A couple of questions and some, what I feel are legitimate concerns. I know you guys pretty much already made your mind about how you're going to vote on it. And I don't expect you to agree with me. I just want you to think. You used to bring me, God, did you? I wrote you a conscience. Because Bible says unless a man strives lawfully, he strives vain. And I brought up some things previously about legalities, about this contract, about legalities, about the oath that you guys swore to protect and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and bear true faith and allegiance to the same, but to faithfully execute the duties of your office. And then you said so help me God. That means something. I just want you guys to contemplate that. Because a serious matter's at hand. We're talking about the lives of the residents of this city. We don't just like come in here to give you a hard time. We just want to see things done right. We just want things to be done right. Lawfully. And, you know, even in law, if something is done unlawfully, that ruling ends up being null and void. So all the paperwork and all the documentation, and even this gentleman said to me, "There's eight other pilot projects in the city and this one's going to pay more than all those together." I said, "Well, there are a lot of problems in my eyes that there are eight other companies getting tax abatements when the city is in the red and we need funds. Why are we giving these special deals?" And he said it to me like it was... I should have been excited. I don't know. I'm not the most brightest guy in the world, but that math doesn't add up. And I just ask you guys to really look at... I think someone mentioned bringing in a professional to really analyze, assess, evaluate, and look at the nuts and bolts of a project. You know, I understand there's supposed to be... A project like this is not supposed to have any negative impact. I understand it has two negative impacts. One, you're going to close the street. You're going to close off Wrangler's food. You're going to close off the Harmon boat slip business. That's two negative impacts. How do you lawfully do that? And how can you say it's a good deal when it violates these mandates? I just, here again, I want you to agree with me. I just want you to think. Just think and analyze and assess it. Two negative impacts, not supposed to have any negative impacts. You know, is the city attorney here? Because, I don't know, maybe because you guys are on attorney, you're not expected to know the law, but he is.
Chief.
Chief. And she's supposed to keep you straight when you're out of line.
This particular one was done by the... So I'm here, the municipal...
But if this gets approved under your watch, it's on your head. And my thing is, you're an officer of the state and an officer of the court. Maybe you're not expected to know, but you are. And it's your job to keep them in line when they're out of line. And that's just, either we're going to do it lawfully or we're not going to do it at all. Because it's like hearsay. Hearsay is invisible as evidence in a court of law. A lot of this stuff that's been proffered is like proffered evidence. It's hearsay. There's no proof. There's no substance. It's like a fugazi. It's a hoozy. It's a waxy. It's a fairy dust. And I just, I'm just saying, vote your conscience. Look at this thing like your life depended on it. Because ours do. I reside in a 115-year-old house. It's not raggedy, but it's old. Why are my taxes over $5,000 a year and rising? When I lived at EHT in a brand-new house, my taxes were only $6,000 a year. Ocean City has lower taxes in terms of actual per capita basis than Pleasantville. Why? Because the businesses pay the brunt for the taxes in Ocean City.
Yes.
And we want to give them abatements?
Yes. It does sound...
I am not in agreement. I am not in agreement. I am not in agreement.
No.
Doesn't make sense.
Steve Young. And I'm here as a grandfather to a lot of children that's in Pleasantville. I'm here as a taxpayer paying county and federal taxes. And I'm here as a community person about this concern of what's going on with this development. New Jersey did a task force on equity and found out that a lot of developers have been coming in to black communities and haven't been doing their fair share of what they should have been doing. So it's about solutions right now. My experience of being on planning boards, my experience of being in the community with boots on the ground and knowing what's going on. There's a solution that we all can come together on. And that is called community benefits agreement. It's something that states all over the country say that you should be involved with. And so I just want to educate you, for those who don't know, on some things on what is a community benefits agreement. It's an agreement signed by the community benefit groups and a developer identifying range of community benefits that developer agrees to provide as part of development. What is a community benefits group? A community benefit group is a coalition of neighborhood associations, faith-based organizations, unions, environmental groups, and others coming together. What are some of the benefits for communities? To obtain community input into projects, partnerships between developers and communities and schools, and commitments that may provide sustainability, sustainable benefits for the community. Those are key issues. It's something that no developers should deny that they don't want as well as the government. It is separate from government because it is the community, the people that's going to be affected the most. And it takes the politics out of what's doing right between that developer. What do the developer get out of this? I know that's one thing they want to know. Well, one thing that developers get is they may get their project done, but it will be inclusion and it be fairness and it be equality and it be transparent. Everybody wants government to be transparent. To have a meeting and talk for three minutes about the issues that are going on right now is unfair unless you have a town hall meeting to talk about it first. But a community benefits agreement brings about the togetherness and the unification of the developers. So my question is, because I'm used to just doing three minutes, government is for the people, by the people. It's community. So a question is to the developer. And then I'll ask the board, the council, a question. Would you mind... Who's the developer there? Do you know who right now? Would you mind tabling this? Did you talk to the community and talk about community benefits agreement? That's my question to him. This is community. This is what we talked about. The project is talking about. Would you mind have talked about community benefits agreement?
I'll answer it in a public question. I think that's what it was.
My question to the council, because I know the times about us. Would you mind, would the council, anyone at council, mind tabling this to there's a conversation about community benefits agreement? So it could be transparent and everybody will be considered, have their input into what's going on in Pleasantville. So my question to the council, would one of you mind just tabling this? What's the hurry? What's the hurry? It's about communication and community benefits. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Stand on. Taking a motion to close the public? Stand in favor. That's it. Anyone? Now we have open discussion from council. Councilwoman Thomas.
Well, yeah, well, you know, everybody, it all sounds great. And a lot of people I've never seen. You know, I mean, everybody comes out at the end. We've been working on this project for 18 years. We've been working on this project for 18 years. So I just thought, what I mean, you know, it's all like, like everybody acts like they never heard anything. We've been working on this for 18 years, we've never heard of it. So if it just falls apart, just so you understand, I guarantee, I, there's no way anybody's ever going to invest $40 million again in this city. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
That attitude is the problem.
When you have a beautiful project.
That attitude is the problem.
Now, we went and sold this project, exactly what's going to be built there. It's going to be a showpiece, it will turn the city around. And you guys understand. So that's all I have to say.
A showpiece for who?
And the guys want to say this is my last night, so I can talk tonight.
A showpiece for who?
I'm going to be on your side next week. Don't flip-flop, this is my last week tonight.
Councilman. Councilman David Ford. Going to take a motion to close the work section. Motion. Steve, this is the City of Pleasantville City Council Regular Meeting. Today's date is 29th, today's date, December the 19th, 2022, time is 9:15. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, reports, media, sunshine. Would you please state the implication and the flex? Pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America, to the Republic where it spans one nation under God, invincible, liberating, justice, law.
David Ford. Adam Laro. Thomas. Kamona. Korea. Cisco.
I do. I do stand with you if you'd like to come up with me. Councilman Swan. Good evening, everyone. After 20 years, over 20 years, Councilman Swan, this is the last council meeting tonight. We have, it's been great working with you, Stan, I'm going to miss you. This is happy, sad for you. Happy for you, sad for us. Okay, I have an accommodation to read this, Councilman Swan. Office of Mayor, City of Pleasantville, Commendation. Whereas Stanley Swan was elected as Councilman of Ward 1 for the City of Pleasantville in October of 2000. His commitment and leadership throughout his term expressed the passion he possessed for the residents of the city. And whereas Councilman Swan served as Chairman of the Planning and Development Communities, he is also noted as a successful business owner for over 40 years of a UEC certified business within the City of Pleasantville. His knowledge of the industry played a vital and pivotal role in economic development. Moreover, throughout the years, Councilman Swan has financially supported annual community events such as Winter Wonderland, Trump or Tree, Multicultural Fest, and so much more. And whereas Councilman Swan has generously given to countless families and partnered with various local organizations and youth programs, he is a community philanthropist with a heart for the residents that he serves. Now therefore, I, Judy M. Ward, Mayor of the City of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of the City Council, the administration, the citizens of Pleasantville, do commend Stanley Swan for decades of service as Councilman of the City of Pleasantville, and do pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the old City of Pleasantville to be affixed this 19th day of December in the year of our Lord in 2000. So I, Judy M. Ward.
Look, my heart is still here with Pleasantville. I'll do anything I can, make everything work right here. I'm still going to, I'm going to be on your side.
I'm not that mean.
Maybe you'll see it on my seat.
It's going to be fun.
Congratulations.
I'm going to miss Stanley, he's... Stanley has been a dedicated public servant in the City of Pleasantville. What the knowledge walks out of here with him tonight, and it's, it's sad, it's... I'm going to miss you. You know, you don't always remember.
Congratulations, Stanley. I will miss you. I will see you around. I know where you live.
Councilman. Congratulations. She wants, don't let us go, you know, always be around. Don't forget, I'll be...
20 years, buddy, better, easier said than done, huh? 22? Hey, correct me, 22. We're going to miss you, but stick around, we've got a lot to do, so.
Good job.
You guys, thanks.
You know I'm not going to miss you, bud, congratulations.
22 years, congratulations.
Congratulations, Steve. Now that you've been on this sort of committee for many years, understanding that the difficulties of table care, responsibility, City of Pleasantville, our building, our infrastructure system, and trying to devise a way to come up with a way to move the city forward, keep the city healthy and safe, for health and safety reasons, trying to keep the city out of harms, where you have an expert partner. We know we've seen a lot of busted pipes and where like that. Hopefully we'll be able to keep on, march on, and do what's right for the City of Pleasantville. Especially on the infrastructure. Thank you for your service.
Orders number 24, providing for the execution of a financial agreement under the long-term tax exemption law with the redevelopment for the redevelopment area known as Lot 1 and Block 255 on the tax map of the city. A pre-aid at this, we have... Okay, it's the second reading, public hearing. Anyone that would like to say anything, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name's Rick Genetti. I'm with Brook Group, I am a consultant to the city on redevelopment matters, not just this project. Congratulations, Councilman Swan. Nice, nice working with you. Thank you for having me speak this evening. I will do my best to answer the questions the best that I can. I wanted to give just a little background on this project and on the city in general, and pilot agreements in general. So the city in 2002, or in 2002, was designated a city in its entirety to need a redevelopment. The reason you get that designation is it's, you know, one, it's a difficult-to-develop community, usually old housing stock, old buildings, environmental conditions, above-the-average poverty rate in the town. And it starts to implement state programs that bring, you know, I said this two weeks ago, tools in the toolbox to start bringing development to town. This agreement, or this site, was transferred to the city in 1997. It was the old high school site, built in the early 1900s. So it's a property that for 120 years approximately hasn't paid any taxes to the City of Pleasantville. So the city in 2003, under its statutory rights from the state, did a redevelopment plan for Lake Bay, the Lake Bay Area. Redevelopment plan is the start of the tools to redevelop an area. It helps you with zoning, it provides options for these kind of, you know, pilots, among other things, right? They had multiple developers come in and show interest in this site. I think somebody had mentioned Poe Brothers, JMS, Jack Mars. These are all folks who came in early who couldn't make the financial plans work. By the way, as Councilman Swan said, they've been working on this for 18 years, there was proposals on the table that those developers wanted, which included pilots, but also included direct payments to the city per unit. Direct payments in addition to pilots. Those were rejected by the city, just so you know. And rightfully so. And this thing sat, there was many, many developers who wanted to do affordable housing there. I met with dozens of them. And they would say, we're going to do affordable housing, we might build 10,000 or 15,000 square feet of retail, but we're going to do low-income housing. By its nature, low-income housing in state New Jersey works under pilot agreement. And also works under a affordable housing pilot agreement. Because we'll talk about the numbers here, and I know what you were saying, you should be happy. The numbers are, on a, on a market-rate pilot, significantly higher. So we're talking a different set of numbers than when you're talking about when we did the Hope 6 project 15 years ago. Or that the Housing Authority pays on its cooperation agreement, or that Karen pays on its assisted living and senior center, or that church pays for its units, you know, at the old church, or that city center pays for those four buildings. Those were wise developments. We asked, do they work? Do pilots work? Do we remember what our city center looked like prior to this development? And the, and the environmental conditions that were there, and the oil tanks and all the other stuff that had to come out, and all the remediation that had to be done, having a lumberyard near Center City, having Main Street buildings that were falling apart and were safety hazards. So the redevelopment there made the city a better place and a safer place. But it didn't generate as much revenue as the city would like. Okay, but it brought in, it brought in rooftops, which the rooftops should spend money in town. And I see a lot of improvements up and down Main Street, I'd like to see more. But Main Street was not as nice 10 years ago. Okay, and it's getting better as we go. So as we go, this development has gone through multiple developers, multiple redevelopment plan amendments. In 2016, after the Great Recession, and after, you know, other developers were then rejected, the city did an outreach for developers. We reached out directly to dozens, I, I don't know the number, I'd have to look up, but I'm sure it was 40 or 50 developers, and marketed it regionally for developers. Scarborough Properties was the designated developer, became designated in 2017. There was a question about the dredging. That was in a 2017 or 18 redevelopment agreement, which was replaced and amended in 2019. That agreement with the City of Ocean City did not work out because the plan to do that was not approval by the Department of Environmental Protection. So that's a document that was replaced. That's, that's why that's not, not the case. It would have been nice if it worked for the city, because the city would have brought in revenue. Part of that revenue was going to go to who did the work, and part of that revenue would have come to the city. That's what was being negotiated. But the New Jersey EEP would not allow that. So it didn't happen, we didn't make any transactions with the City of Ocean City. So this plan, as it sits, has gone through several public meetings because that had to go through a redevelopment plan amendment in 2019, a new redevelopment agreement. All of this was presented at that time. So let's, let's look at, I guess the one thing, just on the taxes, that I think is important, and I know, we can always agree to disagree about the amount. When this pilot, oh, by the way, just one of the questions, very good observation, and it came up from Councilman Thomas the last time, I believe. The projection in the application bar for the financial agreement says two, might have been, well, two years of zero. That's reflective of a year of construction and the first year of lease-up. The financial plan picks the years, and the year one starts for each individual building. When each individual building gets a CO, that's what's in the agreement. So that's, that's what starts it. And in theory, you know, you look at that pilot two different ways. You look at those numbers, I like to look at the stabilization number once everybody's in and it's gone, right? So we got it up to $2,100 a unit. 378,000 once it's stabilized. At $378,000 a year, that'll be the fifth, that project will be the fifth-largest taxpayer to the City of Pleasantville. The fifth-largest taxpayer to the City of Pleasantville. This is not a pilot, when I made the comment sort of to you earlier, we were talking about pilots. When you add up the four buildings at City Center, the two projects at Hope 6, the two buildings in high-rise and mid-rise of the senior buildings in the Housing Authority, Karen's Building and the Church. They pay 600 units approximately, 20,000 square feet of retail. They pay, in 2021, they paid $303,000 to the city. This project will pay more because it will be the fifth-largest taxpayer for the City of Pleasantville. And by the way, when we say 378, we talk about, we talk about the stabilized period. It's 378 is minimal, and it must go up every year. It'll go up by either the same amount as the tax rate in the city. See, your taxes go up by 3%, that goes up by 3%. But if your taxes go down, sounds crazy, right? But what if they do, it's a long-term agreement, the taxes on that still must go up by at least 1%. That's the agreement. And by the way, notwithstanding any of the above that I just said, 10% of the revenue, gross revenue, is paid to the city. So the baseline is the 378,000 that goes up every year, that's the baseline. So if they do a bad job marketing it, and they have a 10 or 12% vacancy rate, the city gets 378. If they do a good job and it's fully occupied, the city will get more. If the project is successful, I mean, very successful, because this is a really, what I call, an amenity project. This is not just like, hey, you got an apartment to live in, this got all kinds of amenities. It's, it's to draw higher rents in a beautiful location. If those rents go up and match what we believe they will go up by, the payment to the city will go up accordingly. So if he raises his rents from 1800 or 1900 to 2200 or 2300, our, our payment to the city goes up. Now in addition, one of the reasons you do a pilot is for economic development. That DCA application, granted, any, ever deal with the state, I deal with the state all the time. You follow the instructions, they call this a commercial project because it's a market-rate rental. They call the residential projects residential if they're a homeownership project or a low-income housing project. That's why it's called commercial and the units are not applicable. We don't make the rules, the DCA does. That application to the DCA is so the LLC can be turned into what's called an urban renewal. That application to the DCA is so the LLC can be turned into what's called an urban renewal LLC. That's what makes it eligible, that's what that application is, and that's all that it is, okay? That's what it's for. Because you have to be an LLC to qualify for the financial agreement. And it has to be in an area in need of redevelopment, which that area is designated under the state rules to be an area in need of redevelopment. It has been since 2003. So that's the other thing. But one of the things that residential does, because we're talking about a financial agreement for residential. The rest of it is the commercial. The commercial will pay taxes too. That's in addition. Those are, everyone wants residential or commercial because it pays additional taxes and it's additional benefit to the city, and it's additional jobs to the city. So the plan is, if I'm right, Mr. Scarborough, is two restaurants, a tiki bar, a bakery, coffee shop. Oh, by the way, I think 90 parking spots for the commercial side. And those parking spots will be public so people who want to enjoy the renovated park, a marina, fishing dock can park at that site and take the walking paths and all that kind of stuff and use it as a benefit to the city. So we get the commercial and additional revenue. This will pay well over $400,000 a year. Probably be the fourth highest taxpayer in the city. So let's look at some of these other questions. I've got to put my glasses on and look like I'm being my neighbor.
Mrs. Janey?
Yes?
Can you speak to one of the comments about the potential negative impact to Randalls and the boat slip of a private homeowner? Could you tell them what that situation is?
Yeah, and Sean might have to help me further, but for Randalls, Randalls right now has no parking except street parking, parking the city street. They actually parked on the city bike path, which is illegal parking. So there's a benefit to Randalls to have people park illegally, but no one's saying anything down there. There will be, right across the street from Randalls, nine parking spaces that they'll be able to use during the day for their staff, okay? And people come in and go in. The rest of the benefits to Randalls is, they opened up, at least during COVID, they started doing a lot more retail sales, not just, you know, they were primarily selling the restaurants. And then during COVID, they were having people come in because restaurants were closed and buy directly. But you're going to have a heck of a lot of people coming here and enjoying the tiki bar and all those kind of public facilities. And they're going to have access. If I was at Randalls, I would have, I would change the front of this building and have a retail store to make sure, and by the way, that would be a benefit to the city and to Randalls. Because you're going to have a lot of people coming here and enjoying this location, there's open areas here, walk in the park, having a beer and shopping and bringing home some clams or shrimp or whatever Randalls sells.
If that street is closed, it's not going to matter?
Well, the streets are all going to have circulation. Because the street is going right through here. The street's going right around the whole site, see? All that, see, right now, this is blocked off here, that's going to be opened up. Developers are going to open it up and you're going to have circulation. This is a public street right through the middle here, okay? So the streets are all going to be open and circulating a square right now. And then for Mr. Harmon, former Councilman Harmon owns the property here. And Mr. Scarborough, I offered to make some additional parking right here for Mr. Harmon if he goes and starts to rent out boat slips again. There will be, we'll add some parking right on the site, right here for him. That was part of the proposal to the planning board, so that he has to accept.
If the street is closed, it's not going to matter?
Well, this street here is open, right? Because it goes through like this. So there's access all the way through, the planning board saw the planning application.
Mr. Janey, could you also, while you're there, talk about the opportunity zone?
As much as I go, the opportunity zone is probably not going to be part of that project because that's already more than halfway through to approve, it was a 10-year time period. So some of those benefits, you know, the problem with the opportunities zones, especially in the state of New Jersey, they are not, they were not conducive to the way you had to deploy your dollars. Somebody had, the investors had to sell their gains, sell their assets, sell their stocks, sell their apartment building, and they had six months or something to deploy that money into a project. You know where it works well, where it worked well on people that own multiple apartment and commercial properties, that they could trade them amongst their own LLCs. And then rehab them, because those properties existed. It takes so long in New Jersey to get approvals that it makes it very difficult to deploy opportunities on money.
Mr. Janey, the same program, same development to take place. You gave the numbers in reference to the pilot program for 30 years. I ask you a question. If the pilot program is not in existence and the developers still wanted to do business, how much will Pleasantville be getting?
It's a good question. I think we would not have a project, because I don't know.
No, 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 no. I'm asking how much we'll be getting, not that you can't answer that. Not that we won't be having a project. And I'm saying if Mr. Scarborough said, no, I'm going to 30 years here, I'm still going to do business here, how much would the city of Pleasantville be retaining?
I guess the answer would be, because it's a good question. So your assessment is based on what your property is worth. So the higher those taxes are, the lower that property is worth. You all know who own houses in town. If you own a $100,000 house in Pleasantville and you're paying $78,000 a year in taxes, that's why it's worth 100,000. Taxes were 3,000, it would be worth 160,000. So you could say, oh, okay, well, he's going to put a $30 million project up and it's worth 30 million. At Valorem taxes, it would not be worth 30 million. It would be worth half that, maybe, maybe less. And I'm saying, they couldn't build it, because as we talked about the gross revenue, you remember, there's gross revenue, but then there's operating expenses, and then there's debt service.
You are consulting.
That has nothing to do with us.
No, it doesn't, but you need to.
And we should have to pay that.
No, I'm still waiting.
You want to do business? There's costs to do it.
We're going to have order with this.
Can we finish our dialogue, sir?
We're going to have order.
That is, he and I was talking. So, Mr. Janey, the question that I proposed to you, I'm looking for an answer. But if you can't answer, so be it.
I do not give an answer because I don't know what the value would be.
That's nothing.
I don't, the value would not be what it cost to build. It would be lower.
Of course you can't answer, we can agree to leave that alone.
Yes, and look, and we can agree to disagree on those items.
Mr. Janey, can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question? Just common sense question. Is the responsibility of the citizens of this city to fund that project?
Is this a sound question?
I think, I don't think it's, the citizens of the city aren't the reason why. So that's not, it's a decision on whether or not you want a new project, new rooftops, and additional revenue to the city. So, you know, in my opinion, do I think it's a good idea? Yes, but I can agree that some people don't think it's a good idea. Property can sit baking for another 15, 20 years. Or a lower-end project can get built.
Or we can agree.
Okay.
Or we can agree to meet in the middle and do something reasonable that benefits the developer and the people.
So let me go, and before I forget these questions, there was, a young lady talked about insuring the project. To be clear, the agreement says that if the developer or owner is in default, because once it's built, it's the owner, that the city will work with the secured lenders, the mortgage company. And that the city is required to allow the secured lenders to bring it out of default. The secured lenders bring it out of default. And the city be required to allow the secured lenders to change ownership, to manage the property. It later says that if the secured lenders or the owner does not bring it out of default, the city has the right to cancel the agreement and dislocate actual any property tax owner, property taxpayer, property owner, who doesn't pay taxes. You'd put a tax lien on it, you'd sell the tax lien, someone would propose on the property. But the city would terminate the financial agreement and it would go away. The tax assessor would go down and assess the property, and that would be the new assessment on the property. So the city's not guaranteeing any payments to anybody on the pilot. How does it benefit the youth and the seniors? I don't know if I can answer that in any other way, except that it's just bringing additional revenue to the city. It's bringing additional new rooftops to the city with new people, more people. I mean, I think that's a benefit, but I guess that's up to the debate.
What is rooftop?
Rooptops, you know, I'm sorry, it's a good question. Just housing, rooftops. It's a redevelopment term, you bring housing units in with the hope that people, especially, you know, you bring market rate, higher-end rental units in, those rooftops all carried. The other thing you say, wallets, you're bringing wallets down. People will have some dollars to spend in the city, which help the restaurants and the stores and Main Street and things like that. And that's part of your redevelopment, your redevelopment goals, is to do that. Sean, do you want to address anything with the plan itself?
Well, I would just point out that the plan is really, we focus a lot, and we're talking a lot about this component of the plan right here, it's the residential component. This component of the plan is the commercial component, the brick mansion. That's 9.4 acres, and I own that. I've owned that for three years. This is 25 acres in its entirety, this development, that's been approved. Most of it belongs to the city.
Where's the yacht club?
Yacht club's right there, and it's sort of the hole in the doughnut. But this is all the city's, we've completed now an approval for that. This is all the city's public marina, and we've made some planned improvements to it. It's truly not very functional right now for several reasons, all of which is part of this overall plan. So 60% of this development is public, it's public property. And this is helping carry that forward, and when it's done, this helps carry this forward.
So you don't own the commercial portion of that?
No, I own the commercial portion up here. It's 9.4 acres, but all of this out here, the water's edge and back this way, the park is owned by the city and planned and approved for those improvements that you see on that.
Excuse me, Mr. Scarborough, could you refer to the part in the contract agreement about the bike police substation? What's the detail on that and who will pay the expenses for that?
We had that on the plan, it was two or three years ago. And then the police didn't want the substation. They, at that time, said, it'd be nice to have a place for our folks to duck in and have some shelter. So we have an idea of a breakfast, sort of like a coffee shop out here, and we thought we would do something with them in that component there, but it wasn't.
But it's still in agreement as a substation?
And we can do it if they want it, I guess is probably the best way for me.
But is that what's being agreed upon? I mean, so you're going to agree to go into disagreement, are you including that element?
Yeah, I mean, that's the building for it. The degree of what they want, how far they want to take that substation.
But there will be no responsibility on the city to have a requirement?
No, not at all, that's all, that's one.
Now, the city and the planning board during the process, because that was something that Scarborough said he would do, but the city didn't want the responsibility of maintaining the building. So that's why that changed as the redevelopment plan was approved.
So there's a new copy without that?
I don't know which one you have, but when you have the approved site plan, you do what the city asks you to do in the site plan approval. And what Sean is saying, he can add to that building right there if the police want a place, but that would be part of his responsibility, because that would be his building, instead of having a separate substation, because the police didn't want the separate substation. Where the city didn't, I don't have it, it was 2019.
But you can't approve this plan if there's going to be additional changes?
That's not true. I'm going to be perfectly clear with that. We talked about this plan, this isn't approved. I have a decision and resolution. I have all my CAFR permits, all my local permits, all my county permits, all my federal permits. This is a site plan approval that's complete, the approval of the actual work. That's complete, that exists. This isn't an idea, this isn't a cartoon.
This starts in three or four months.
I'm asking if that, this substation is going to be deleted, then that plan has to change.
No, 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 I'm not to speak to that now without, I don't know what you're looking at. We have a decision and resolution, it's been voted on, that's what we found.
Also, in private session, they approved this project. Is that what you're saying?
Now, there's a site plan approval that's been completed by the planning board.
And Mr. Scarborough, you know, I do understand, basically, like I said when I spoke to you, you think it's a great project. I see how it could benefit the community, it's valuable, something of that caliber in our community. But I think I share with my fellow citizens of the city, the fundamental issue that we should be getting, as you say, $40,000 out of the deal, I say perhaps we should get more out of the deal. Or if you're going to get a tax amendment, it shouldn't be for 30 years. I mean, so many things could happen in a 30-year period where the value of the property, God forbid we have another Sandy or something happen, the value of it could go to nothing, you know, or it could be significantly diminished. There's so many dynamics of what could happen. And another element to that that could certainly be, in the traditional business, is understanding, when you pay property taxes, it doesn't have become something that you write off of your taxes, your income taxes. How come this is not just being done in a more traditional way? That the people in the city say, okay, you build it, you pay your taxes, and you write the taxes off your income tax. We do, I just don't understand why you must have this pilot, which would basically deprive the city over the long term, like 75% of the revenues that it would otherwise get. I don't get that.
But what's our question?
I couldn't see the benefit of it, but how it would benefit the community, to deprive us of the benefit that we would otherwise get out of this kind of arrangement. I see how it means it too, but I'm going to say.
I have a question, I have a question. Has anyone considered how this would affect our children in the school system? In already overpopulated, or close to being overpopulated, South Main Street School, possibly Washington Avenue Street School? How is this going to affect the school district? How are we going to hire the city council more police officers? Firemen?
Teachers, go schools.
Has anyone considered that?
Are we going to have an ambulance service? More people?
No, we don't have an ambulance service.
Are we going to have one now?
We used to have an ambulance service. We used to.
If you don't mind, sir, if you do a comparative analysis with Absekin, Norfield, and EHT, is that what you said? To come up with?
They were the neighboring.
You just said we went through planning, and sometimes planning board says contingent upon you doing certain things. You met all those needs at this point, and what are the next steps?
This plan has full planning board approval and is fully permitted through CAFR in the state. I think the next approval is building permits, am I correct? It's a submission of building permits to the building department, and they can start building.
Okay, so I would have done with what I was saying to Mr. Scarborough. So as far as 2021, the municipal share of levy for Norfield was 29%. For EHT, 18.9%. For Absekin, 31.9%. But Pleasantville is 62.2%. So it votes asking, how could that be a proper comparative analysis?
Because that's just a portion that you're breaking down out of the tax rate. Use the whole tax rate, use the effective tax rate. The effective tax rate in Pleasantville right now is 4.79%. Right, second highest, therein lies the problem. If it was 2.8%, maybe we wouldn't be here right now. And it's a downward spiral. When you start to lose your ratable base, right? Which is, it's always, commercial ratables are easiest to understand because it's no trash, no kids, right? Well, I'll answer your question. These units will rent between $1,800 and $1,900, right? The mix generally is 60/40, 60% to us, 40% for one single veteran. They just don't generate schoolchildren, because the option for somebody at nineteen hundred dollars a month is I can either rent a single family home, or I can buy a single family home. It's going to say there's zero kids, but just to give you a sense of it, the council was, was good enough to this project and me personally to go and visit the Pennsauken project, which was very similar with this. I was involved, I was co- 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 It has, on average, over the last three and along four years, had ten or less kids, with two hundred and fifty units. Brand-new, knocked-out, beautiful units.
It's a whole different demographic.
It's a whole, you're right.
It's all a different demographic.
Not the, not the community is, in fact, compare it, you can look it up on your phone. Economically, it's a very similar demographic. The whole demographic that I'm coming towards is, a new apartment building costs a lot to build, like any new anything costs to build. You got to rent it for more. It just, it's, it's, in general, a different consumer than a family of four would use. For the same dollar, you can get more space, all right, in the same, in the same community. So that's just the mix, that's what happens. So it's not a Kmart or Walmart, where there's absolutely nobody living there, but there's, relative to the value created, and, you know, in this case, money paid, it's very, very limited, the amount of school churn.
So let's just say it's hundred and eighty units, there are thirty school-aged children, let's just say. That would be a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar gross expense to the school district.
Why say eighteen, why don't you say sixty? It's just not true. I just told you, two hundred and fifty-eight units, just delivered in the last four years, same economic situation, same, same, same. It's ten or less kids.
Oh, so at ten kids, at twenty-two thousand per kid, that comes out to two hundred twenty thousand dollars. So then, that's gross cost to the school district. So then, my question would be, what is the net benefit to the city for the payment, the pilot payment?
It'd be like another two hundred thousand dollars with the commercial.
What's the net benefit to the city? Do you have those figures?
You can't, you can't know those figures, because you just did an assumption.
No, no, no.
Based on ten-
Because that's why I asked about the financial projections that is supposed to be done.
Then it's, it's three seventy-eight plus the commercial. Whatever, I mean, it's north of four hundred thousand.
I think the questions have been answered, and, and, and more than likely, it's not going to be to your liking.
Probably haven't been answered.
I don't think that's what happened, because group here, we have to move forward.
My question wasn't answered.
They haven't been answered.
Mike hasn't answered, it was not answered.
Excuse me. Rick, one of y'all answered, say applause, I got this piece of paper from this carriage in the backyard. And this kind of concerns me, and it basically says that if anything goes wrong, that the city has to alleviate the problem and fix it ourselves. And I know I never saw this in the agreement, and I just want to know, you know, how does this work? Because this is not good, this doesn't look good on paper.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did answer that question, that's, I, I, someone would have to show me that in the agreement. There's a specific area in the agreement that states that if there's a default, the city works with the secured lenders, the mortgage company, to allow them to correct a default. We have to allow them to correct a default. And we'll allow them to transfer it to somebody who will correct a default. If the default is not corrected, the city cancels the agreement, and does the same as it does with any delinquent tax payer.
Because it says here that it's supposed to perform actions on behalf of the company. So that's a little tricky, right?
The, um, remedies on the fault, section thirteen point oh-two, correct? That's what it is.
No, financial emergency, that section.
Yep, what's the number of section?
And I've handled.
Yeah, that's not part of the agreement.
Who's carrying, who's carrying? Where did you get that off of, because they're saying that's not the agreement?
That was off of the agreement that you're about to approve. That's where it's from. Unless there's a new one out there, that's off of the document.
Because this is, this is the one, this is one of the things I was concerned about. Because I have a whole lot of things I'm concerned about, but this one compared.
I, I, I can tell you one. It's with the certificate of formation, number nine, item number nine. And it says, this company is subject to the provisions of section eighteen of Public Law nineteen ninety-one, citation four thirty-one. And it also cites forty-eight twenty-eighteen, respecting the powers of the city of Pleasantville to alleviate financial difficulties of the company or to perform actions on behalf of the company in public terminations of financial emergency. Now, that statute forty, twenty-eighteen goes into more detail of what this, what defines a financial emergency. And it talks about things like, in case of mismanagement and things like that of the, of the entity, then that's when it's in turn applied. And then the local finance board would then come in as an arbiter to decide how this needs to be resolved. And it's a binding decision, that's what the statute says.
If our lawyers don't even know this, this should be tabled.
Can y'all please table this?
Our lawyers, our lawyers don't even know this.
It's not part of the agreement, it's part of the certificate of formation.
Because it's not in there.
It's part of their certificate of formation. Well, that's part of the, the formation document that's required by the state. Was not that, not, not.
Okay, we, we finished the Q and A from our professional. Now, we're still open for public hearing, anyone that wants to come forward and state their name for the record. Please do so.
Goodie, good, good night. Bristol Noel. So, um, I'm all for redevelopment, but I just want to make sure that the fair share is given to the city. Because it was not too long ago that I found out that there was economic inequality with the sewer payments. Which, to the tune of a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars every year, was being missed in revenue, on, for the city's benefit. So who was the attorney who reviewed this document and represents the interests of the city?
On the financial agreement?
On this?
Right here.
Fleischman. What other things have he done for the city recently? If you agree to this as it stands, with any errors, what supersedes the words or the numbers?
Two oh-nine.
The way it's formulated, I can't answer that question. And again, I didn't-
Like if there are figures in there, maybe they're off or not right, or there's words, which one supersedes?
The, the calculation in the section that calls over the annual service charge is what supersedes. The numbers are purely as they say, pro forma estimates. Okay?
What is the net benefit to the city? I mean, I would think that Mr., his name escapes me. Very, I would think he would have that, so that's why I keep asking. How many jobs will be created long-term, only twenty? So when we say it's creating jobs, it's not, it's the short term. So as far as aesthetics, yes, that's great, but I just think that we are too busy just looking and looking and appearing desperate, like, oh, yes, I'm so, we're going to take whatever you gives us, because we've got nothing else. I don't, I think we should set our value. Thirty years, what is this perversion with thirty years? That is to the detriment of the city. I think that the figures need to be renegotiated to create a little more economic equality. I do not think it's fair that we burden this small little town with thirty years. And then, for the half of it, it's what, less than forty of the tax value? That's not fair. That's not fair at all, renegotiate the figures.
Yes, my name is Tim Jones again. I would just like to go on directly supporting what Ms. Noel just said. Now, with regards to the fact that the city should just get more out of the deal. As you just cited, on a top figure, we'll get four hundred thousand dollars a year out of that. Cutting, cutting down to two hundred thousand dollars, if we're saying we're giving the school board expense, two hundred thousand dollars of revenue. There's a, a fee associated with this deal, where Mr. Scarborough will make more than the city off of this deal every year. As one person, one person will make more than this whole city makes off of this deal. And if you transfer that person, will make more money off this deal than the whole city of Pleasantville. That doesn't seem like equity, especially if you have a master plan that says actions like this are supposed to give revenue, ongoing revenues in a form of significant rateables. Significant rateables is not two hundred thousand dollars, by the side, for thirty years.
Okay, um, my question wasn't answered. How is this deal, the benefits of the developer going to help this city? The youth, the senior citizens, how is it going to help? Have we taken in consideration supporting the Pleasantville Board of Education in building a new school? Are we going to hire new police officers? Are we going to hire new firemen? Where is all this going to come from? His tax abatement, how is that going to help this city? How? What is the plan for Main Street? With the tax abatement? What is it? Do we have the answers for that? They're looking out for themselves. They're not looking out for Pleasantville. Anytime you compare Absekin, South Point, Norfield, it's, come on. It doesn't make any sense. Pleasantville is in a whole different ballgame. And I hate to say it, Major League Baseball, Negro League Baseball. I hate to say it, but it is what it is. You cannot compare Norfield, Absekin, Lingwood to Pleasantville, you just cannot do it. And I don't appreciate being brushed off, because I'm for the youth, right? I don't appreciate being brushed off with that flimsy, uh, 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 non-caring response. I really don't. Y'all full of crap.
Yes, there's more people from the public. Publicly speaking.
Don't even come here if you're not interested in the youth and the senior citizens.
I want to know if the pilot deal was off, would these, would this company still be interested in building? Or if the pilot deal was somewhat off, okay, we'll let you do it for five years. And then the other, then after the fifth year, then you start paying full-blown taxes. I'm not against beautifying this city.
No.
I'm just not. I'm just not against it. The plans are absolutely gorgeous. I absolutely get it, but I don't get it at my expense. I don't get multi-million dollar corporations coming in, paying little to no taxes for thirty years. Who does that? If I miss one sewer bill, you want to put a lien on my house. One sewer bill. If I miss it for a whole year, I, I know you're going to damn near take it. But they don't have to pay for thirty whole years? Can you bring the number down? I want it to be beautiful, but not like this. Not like this, just not like this. How many of us got thirty more years to live in this city? How many of us, estimate? If, if we believe we're going to get old, thirty more years, we're going to leave this burden on our kids and our children's children. Do you, my child is not going to stay in Pleasantville for the high taxes and everybody else is getting a free ride. They're not going to do it, I'm going to lose my home, because my child will refuse to pay taxes, because people like Scarborough's making a whole lot of loot. Come on, bring us to the table. Help, let us help you decide. We voted you to be for the people. For the people, you took an O to be for us. You said, if I, if you vote for me, I'm going to represent you. That's what you said, and you said, so help me God. You said it, I didn't make you say it, I didn't make you run. And I'm not hollering at you, I'm not. I'm just so tired of giving away my firstborn.
In reference to that, um, financial emergency thing, you say that's not in the package no more?
It's not in the financial agreement, it was in his certificate, the form certificate for the state. But the city has a default provision in the financial agreement.
So in reference to certificate, that's in the certificate, but it's not in the agreement. So as of November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, when Mr. Scarborough signed this, it's no longer in the agreement?
That's, agreement is his certificate of formation with the state in recognition. That's not an agreement to housing a bird down, excuse me, the city executes, that's his formation document.
I'm confused. Thank you, I am confused. I think we should renegotiate, and I hope somebody will promote it, and second motion to, uh, good plan of Scarborough. But it's costing us too much money. Thirty years, we did thirty-nine years of sewer thing that wasn't working. Now, question, council, uh, uh, business administrator, mayor, anybody that can answer. Building on Main and Washington Avenue, that's what, thirty years, tax abatement too? How much did we benefit from that? That's been in existence for a little while now, so how much did we benefit from it?
The net, the net.
What is that, the net?
Taxes have gone up?
If that's an example of proof in the pudding, then maybe we should rethink our thinking. Because right now, it's not a good deal for Pleasantville. And in the pilot program, it does speak about it, it doesn't have to be thirty years, it can be five years for new development.
That's right.
It says for the new development, it says the new development. It can be five years. If we are negotiating, it's like, you, you can negotiate, both sides get it, bring forward. Mr. Janetti is the consultant, am I right, sir, for Pleasantville? Did you tell him, they can do five years instead of thirty?
We talked about all different kinds of terms, negotiated all kinds of different numbers. That's why in this agreement, there's built-in step-ups as you go.
So, so the five-year thing, that must have got stepped over, and they worked with the thirty years. I think that's what happened. Each councilperson, Mr. Swan, Leven, thank you for your service, for the years that you've been here. No disrespect to anyone. Councilman, 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 president, can y'all make a motion to turn his mic up? Councilman, 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 president, can you make a motion to turn his mic up? Turn his volume, cause he can't hear back here. And ladies, and the councilwomen. You do have the due diligence to table this, to only speak in reference to the thirty years and why not the five years? Renegotiate, because Mr. Scarborough said, the thing is in the making, everything's been approved, and it's gonna be built. The way he said it, it was like, it's gonna be built without your approval. My passing is that. So correct me if I'm wrong, in the way I heard that. So can it be built without your approval? Councilor, president, and councilman, and mayor? No? Okay, so he, must've, must've misspoken. Alright, so, again, 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 because I also heard there's four plans already that are thirty years. Can somebody tell me what those four plans are, that are thirty-year abatements that's already in existence? Because this would be five. Can somebody tell me, what, what size are they? I know Main Street and Washington is one, what's the other three?
Oh, we have those. Mr. Lee, the tax abatement's.
The caring center around the Louden Road.
Yeah, let them just forward it real quick.
Thirty years that are tax abatements, four, four, um, projects that the city has.
Just all the caring projects down to Louden Road.
Okay.
Um, from across the street, uh, the church, St. Peter's Church.
Okay.
Obviously, the Halloweary Thirteenth.
Okay.
Um, that's their hall.
And Hope Six.
And Hope Six.
Hope Six, so, so are we benefiting from that?
We're getting tax money which you normally wouldn't get.
So we would get more if it wasn't thirty years, am I right?
You may get more, but you may not have the project, so you wouldn't.
So, so the main is like the crystal ball, which I don't have, so, right, right, right.
All I can tell you is what we are getting. I can't tell you what you could've been getting.
Right.
I can't tell you what we will be getting.
But you know.
I can tell you now what we are getting.
What we are getting from what we have now, because of the thirty years, but if it wasn't thirty years, we knows that we will get more. But you might not wanna say it because you don't have a crystal ball, so I understand that. But that's fair talk. Okay, so we renegotiate towards a Pleasantville that starts making out better, right? Why not renegotiate, not put me on the spot, just talking to you. For five years, and that's even in reference for our councilmen and councilwomen. Then we can go for the five years instead of the thirty years, and that's negotiation with Mr. Scarborough. He even said, I, I like it or I don't like it. But that's negotiation, you know, I'm just looking at you and saying that, but not putting you on the spot. So, councilor, my time's up, thank you, councilor, president, but I leave you guys with that thought. Maybe we can renegotiate instead of saying yes, so I ask that somebody make a motion, say a motion that table this for now.
Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey. Pleasantville City Council. We've had strip clubs in this city, now a marijuana-growing site. You voted on a trash transfer site, by the way, not too far away from your new building, right? Who told you Pleasantville needed a tiki bar? Tiki bars don't help feed our families and kids in Pleasantville, New Jersey. Build a museum, open a bookstore, a tiki bar? No one found that offensive? Who in Pleasantville needed a tiki bar? Take that to Ocean City. Oh wait, you can't. And by the way, Mr. Janetti, my question was not answered. You had eighteen years to pick up the phone, to send an email, to contact tax abatement experts, social, economic, welfare experts, professors, pilot program experts. You have how many pilot programs in this city?
Four.
Four? Eight, eight, four?
It's a.
I'm sorry.
You count across the street and city center as four, because each building's got its own.
Four, okay. But I'm sorry, but if these programs have never been studied before, and I hope I'm wrong, I really hope these programs have been studied, and the research is there to back up your vote today. Voting on another tax abatement program is fiscally irresponsible. I'm sorry, if you don't have the research to back it up, mayor, you can't vote on it. And after eighteen years, I hope that lawyers hired to represent the city in these negotiations. I don't know, Mr. Janetti, but I hope we have better answers than what if your taxes go down? I think I can't answer that. If this project is successful, if rents go up, probably, I cannot answer, up to debate. These are all things I heard tonight. I hope after eighteen years, our lawyers have more affirmative statements on a program that we're all gonna be paying for. Thank you.
Um, I just have something, I don't know. I'm real tired so badly for a minute. Why isn't every time we come into, um, a deal that's supposed to benefit Pleasantville, that we really don't benefit? We end up paying higher taxes? Are they trying to push us out so they can bring who they want in? And why can't you come up with something as opposed to making a community within a community and separating the people? Why can't you come up with something that will benefit everybody? Why can't you do something or make some contingencies in these, in these deals that you make that they sponsor the football field, or they sponsor this, or they do so? I don't hear anything where we are wanting to benefit directly. All I hear is our taxes are gonna go up because they don't wanna pay taxes. And my taxes go up every year. So like, you gotta think different. This, I don't think this is gonna work. And then you wanna put, it just feels so Atlantic City in there. It just feels tourist section and the rest of it. Yeah, tourist section and the rest of it. So you take care of that section, and it's all beautiful, but it's not, you can't even see it from Main Street. And if you live across Main Street and you go over there, that police and that little coffee bar, they gonna chase you out. So, I think you need to reconsider. And I'm, I'm being, I'm being dead serious. I think you need to reconsider and think more about the city as a whole than one little small section. And stop giving it away for so much for so long. We've been helping y'all out all this time, nobody complained, come in here saying anything about higher taxes because the taxes go up every year, the school taxes go up every year, the school ain't even never painted the fence in the last twenty-two years. So like, do something for us and our kids, make us happy, let us have a part of it. Not just one person making all the money.
They don't pay no taxes.
And for nothing. He makes money and walks away with it. He, we can sell it to somebody else and leave. And we get nothing.
Can I come back up?
No, no.
They say we get, what are we getting? Nothing.
Well, we, well, what are we, but they keep saying benefits, what?
My name is Anna Quintana. I just have a question. I mean, you said that would be, um, I don't remember your, excuse me, your name, I'm sorry.
Scarborough.
Okay. Um, when you said that there was be no kids, you thought?
I didn't say no kids.
You said maybe ten kids. What people are you, um, trying to gravitate to these buildings? Are you trying to gravitate what our community is, or who's gonna come in? Who do you have planned to come in here? Like, you know, who makes this kind of money that can come and go onto these rooftop, since everybody's talking about them visiting the tiki bar? What, what, where are these people coming from, what community?
Trying to turn it over, she's.
From the general demographic area within fifteen miles, fifteen miles of here.
So fifteen miles from here, so.
Starting here, out fifteen miles in general.
So you're saying people from Linwood and, and Summer's Plant?
Atlantic City, Galway.
That's gonna come and, and rent one of these places, the rooftop, so they can go to the tiki bar?
Mr., you asked me a question, I answered your question.
But I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, I'm just worried about our community. Because will they be able, you know, maybe someone wants to go to the, the tiki bar, are they gonna be able to go to the tiki bar?
No.
What if there's trouble on the, when these places go up and they need security? Like, you know, police station put in because you have the tiki bar and you have the rooftops and everybody wants to come there, it's a trouble. You know, you guys say that there's no trouble in Pleasantville, I'm gonna tell you what happened. I was at one of the council meetings, we left one night, and I was out here talking. And you're saying how safe our street is. There was a shooting that was right there on the corner, right where, where those places are in the gray building. I know some of you know it because Mr., Mr. Ricky, you told me to get in my car. Because there was a man running down the street saying, there's a man that was just shot. It wasn't a shooting? Okay. Well, still, that's, you know, everybody said run and get in your car. Okay, but that's what we said.
That's what we call it.
Right.
That's what we told. In the middle street.
Right. Because the man was, one, one man was running up the street yelling that the man got shot, that's why I said. I'm just concerned about the security here in Pleasantville already. We don't have enough to cover all the areas, and I think that with putting something there, it's gonna cause more of a problem. Because you're not gonna want the people of Pleasantville in that development because this is the development for certain great, great bunch of people, not the people of Pleasantville.
Nope.
So my thing is, if this is what's gonna happen, why don't we just sell our homes and go into this building? I'm just asking. You know, because that's gonna give top security here and we're not gonna get it. So that's my only concern, is that we really need to think about what we're doing. I know everybody wants to, to, uh, build up the ocean, the beachfront, the lakefront, whatever you wanna call it. But I think it's some things that we have to really look at, and I couldn't figure out why it had to be thirty, why couldn't it be fifteen? Yeah, I mean, right. But you're not gonna get it. I just ask, thank you.
Can I get a minute, folks? Um, council president, my name is Christian Moreno Rodriguez, I'm actually an Atlantic City resident. Um, we have family here in Pleasantville, New Jersey, uh, and we have our home here also in Pleasantville, New Jersey. Sometimes I, I honestly think you guys sell yourselves short, sometimes. Because when you're Pleasantville strong, you know, we've shut down bad actors, we've, you've, you've hosted amazing charity drives, you've been there for the kids sometimes. You've done what you had to do to provide for your own people. So why do you act like you need this man? Councilman Carmona, if you're out there every other day at the bus terminal, right here on Main Street, you see our people are suffering every day, and you're there to console them. And you honestly think this man and his money is gonna address that? You honestly think that property that's self-segregated is gonna do anything for the people that you're trying to help? When the analysis is showing it's gonna cost us way more than it's bringing in? How are those people that you're helping every single day benefiting from this, Councilman Carmona? Forget about us. How are those people getting the help they need from this project? Because that's what you ran on. That's why we voted for you. You have an amazing soul and you're out there every day like a soldier sometimes. And you honestly believe this property, this self-segregated property, this tiki bar is gonna do anything for the people? Honestly, everyone, Councilman Carmona just won his reelection, so he's gonna be here for another couple of years. It's time to take the training wheels off. I know you weren't part of the original negotiations. I, I, I'll give you that. You weren't a part of the original negotiations, this happened way before you. Same thing for you, Councilman Correa. You weren't a part of it. But you have an opportunity to force yourself to be part of the process. We need you, you have to stand up and defend us. That's why we elected you. That's why you knock on our doors. We know you have good souls. We know you inherited this mess. Guys, we need you. Councilman Swan, respect to your, your years of service too. And your time's up. We hope you have a good retirement. But let's table this, let's, this doesn't have to be the meeting where we sell off this property. We have an incoming councilman coming in. He stated his intentions against us. I mean, at the very least, can you at least tell me, did you read this contract? Do you agree with it? I mean, where do you guys stand? Sometimes I feel like you say nothing and just hide. That's not what we elected you for, Councilman Carmona. We stood with you, please stand with the people.
We apologize, but.
I'm gonna stay in anyway.
Yeah, but you can't say it's all.
All I was trying, all I was trying to say all the time is to table it. Because I'm not gonna be here all night, and I don't think it's fair for all the residents to be here all night. But you have a duty as public service to listen, and you have the opportunity. Right now, it looks like the city council is divided against the community. He has the opportunity to bring it together by saying, let's table this and work together. He has the opportunity. That's not putting it on the person that commanded the city. So I'm asking you again, will you consider holding this back until there's a community benefits agreement and people of the right minds, as well as council, can come together? Will you consider this, yes or no?
No.
Okay, you're a good neighbor, you exactly are a good neighbor, and that's what we wanted to hear. Thank you.
He said no.
He said no. So he don't wanna work with, he don't wanna be a neighbor.
But he wants our tax abatement.
Exactly.
So we're just an admission, we just lost part of your council. So we wanna hear you, but we wanna make sure everyone is here to hear you as well, that's all. Out of respect for what everyone has to say to you.
Sure do. Sure do.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, uh, Jericho County City Council, thank you for your time, thank you for your interest in our city, Mr. Scarborough. This process, this type of thing is never easy, and I don't think everybody's needs and desires are gonna be met. I just believe we're gonna have to arrive at a happy meeting if we can, and be reasonable. However, I would implore the council again to please look at the specifics, the nuts and bolts and the details of this plan. Because we've had many promises of things in this county that was gonna make it better, and it hasn't. You know, when they passed, when they passed the casino referendum years ago, it was supposed to lower taxes and build the community, it didn't. Atlantic City streets are horrible, you know? When they passed that windmill project, supposed to lower our electric bills, it didn't. You know, there's been so many things that have been proposed, and I don't know if it was just oversight on the part of the committee members and the council members of Atlantic City or different municipalities, or if it was just, it just didn't work out. But this is why we need to look at the details like, like, really, really, really hard. And maybe like someone suggested, bring in a professional, because theory and reality sometimes are far, far apart. And it's never gonna be perfect, but we're always supposed to be striving for perfection. And the only way we can do that is we meet in the middle. It can't be all your way, Mr. Scarborough, it can't. It absolutely can't. And it can't be all our way, we know that, but you're saying, let's be reasonable. And look at this plan and get rid of all the bad actors in it. And flesh out the problems, the inconsistencies. Because they're saying one thing, but the document, you know, when you sign that document, that is what becomes law. So the promises verbally mean nothing, they're dead hearsay and mistable's evidence. They're dead hearsay and mistable evidence. It's what's in that document. So we got, really got to dig in that thing like hard. Because they say the devil's in the details, but God is in the details too.
Can I just put my statement on record? Just so I can open.
We were open.
Were we open?
You were.
So everyone here is now open?
Yeah, you were open, it's just you didn't have a council member, that was all.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patricia King. I live on West Seattle. I just wanted to say to Councilman Stan and Swan, I wish you the best.
Stand here.
I wish you the best, Mr. Councilman Stan and Swan. We're certainly going to miss you. God bless. I would just like to say that for this development of that track 255 or that lot, lot, I'm for it. I'm for developing of that land. It sounds like a good deal to me. I'm not happy about thirty years, but I understand it. I understand, after reviewing some literature about it, I have a better understanding of it. Some people like to have a lesser lifespan of that abatement, but it is what it is. My youngest daughter graduated from the high school, the high school student was there in nineteen ninety-five. That spot has been vacant since nineteen ninety-five. So we need to do something.
I need a motion to
Go down.
I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance twenty-four for further review.
Okay, so noted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Davenport. Roll call, Swan.
Abstained.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Okay, this ordinance number two has been tabled.
No, no.
No? Okay. So you're a no.
Rephrase that.
The motion was on the floor.
That wasn't hurtful. That was, that's not what you said.
She tabled it. Yes, she did. She did.
Attention, please.
Yeah, it was abstained from Swan for roll call. And then when it came time for Fidelaro. Did everyone else understand it was a motion to table? To table. Okay. Second on the roll call. Okay. Roll call again for table. Swan. Abstained. Okay. Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Abstained.
Okay. Who you saying? Okay, so we have two abstentions and five yeses. Ordinance number twenty-four is tabled. Resolution one ninety-nine creating a current account temporary budget for twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa. Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred creating a sewer utility temporary budget for twenty twenty-three.
I can't hear.
You can't hear me?
No, 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 not you.
Okay. Davenport, second by
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred-one authorizing implementation of a corrective action plan for twenty twenty-one annual audit.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
No.
So noted. Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred-two approving the sale of property known as block one thirty-five, block eight, and nineteen point zero two. Also known as one seventy-two dash one eighty-six North Main Street and one eighty-four North Main Street in the amount of two hundred forty thousand dollars.
Question.
Okay.
Question. Are we calling?
No. Yeah, resolution two oh five, uh, two oh four, two oh five. Okay. So I've got Swan, roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution two zero, two hundred three approving the sale of property known as block two hundred ninety, block twenty-nine, also known as one forty-five East Delaware Row in the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Quick question. Roll with him. Are those the ones that were
No. Yes. Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. The next one is the item that you all had discussed in work session. You want to say that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Resolution two hundred four, this is the item you all talked about with our table. Approving the sale, can I have one order, please? Approving the sale of property known as block ninety-five, block twenty, also known as eleven Clinton Avenue in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Table.
You making a motion to table? Okay.
Second.
Second by Thomas. Okay. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
You're doing them individually.
Okay. Okay, the table one at a time.
Yes. Okay. Your yes. Okay. This resolution has been tabled. Resolution two oh five approving the sale of property known as block ninety-three, block fifteen, also known as sixteen Camry Avenue in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion table. Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution has been tabled. Resolution two hundred six authorizes the mayor, six clerk to execute agreement with the County of Atlantic Municipal Alliance.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution two oh seven authorizes submission of application for the New Jersey Department for Human Services Division on Mental Health and Addiction Services grant funding.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred eight, support for suitability of cannabis bill business, equally cannabis LLC.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred nine providing for budget transfers for twenty twenty appropriations in the sewer fund.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred ten providing for budget transfers for twenty twenty-two appropriations in the current fund.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution two hundred eleven adopting and certifying the update and review of various sections of the personnel policy and procedures manual.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Resolution, motion approved. Motion to approve Bmore Raffelakis.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Fidelaro.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carmona.
Yes.
Correa.
Yes.
Sistrum. Motion approved. Next is public portion.
It should be no more. It should be, because I have a concern. I have a concern about this right here. So even if we keep thirty years on this, since we tabled it, I think the percentages should shift. Because for it to be ten percent from year one through fifteen, that's not acceptable. And then through sixteen year to twenty-one, only twenty percent of revenue, that's a slap in the face. So two thirds of what the revenue is generating is only at twenty percent or less. Two thirds of the agreement, the schedule needs to be changed. Why? Because we need to increase how much we're receiving. Right? We need to increase it. Here's the reason why. Because we can't even afford a crossing guard. Isn't that right, Mayor Ward? When you told city officials, uh, from the, you're a city official. When you told the school board officials that you couldn't afford a crossing guard for the students to be safe at South Main on Broad Street, we don't got no money. Is that right? We're in a deficit, right Barry?
Absolutely.
So
I did not tell South Main that they couldn't have a room. I tell South Main they could not afford a room.
You, they couldn't afford it. So at this point, I feel as though there needs to be a state takeover. And if there is a state takeover, people need to be given pink slips. The administrator needs to be given pink slip. And the accountant needs to be given pink slip if the state takes over. Because this is not right. We need to do this right. The percentages need to work out to benefit everyone that lives here. Not just the big business and the corporations getting tax breaks. What makes the difference between a Republican and Democrat if you're going to do the same thing? Give tax breaks to the wealthy. It's not fair. South Main Street School needs another crossing guard.
Yeah, I got something to say, sir. Come on. I don't believe motherfuckers get the interview process. This is not motherfucking at all. But it's a serious one, so don't leave, Tony. Don't leave. A young man came into the police department. He feared his attorney. You and I had a prior conversation in reference to why there is an officer sitting in the booth. After my conversation with you, which is fair. You said that, um, it's more beneficial to have an officer on the street than sitting in that booth. Pleasantville was about to be sued. A young man off the street came to the bathroom, passed out. His mom's looking for him, couldn't find him. Got to the point, whenever he got to that point, her husband, boyfriend, whatever, came to the bathroom and seen Lady Sun. He tried to wake him up, I think about two weeks ago. Two or three weeks ago. Tried to wake him up, he wouldn't wake up. He runs outside and says he won't wake up. The mother gets out the car, goes into the men's bathroom, kick his feet. Wouldn't move, kick him again, then he fucking moved. She lifted him up, carried him, and took him to Lady T. House. The doctor said if she wouldn't abort him, he would have died in the bathroom. The doctor also said, no disrespect to you, chief, Pleasantville would have been sued. I'm thinking the bathroom, the police department here is a safe zone. That's the reason I gave you, chief. Joke of running down the street, trying to bust my head in with a bag. I run to the police department, help, 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 nobody's in there. Like you said, chief, it's best to have a man on the street. But what I'm saying is, you, that's probably not guilty, rephrase. Pleasantville is between the catch twenty-two. If you don't put nobody in there, somebody running in to the bathroom, this is a safe zone. If you run in there and nobody's in there and somebody dies, and I'm not an attorney, people might get sued, big time. So what I'm saying, I know we're short on staff. I think we're going to have to take, uh, 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 the most sensible, uh, uh, move. You have to bite the bullet and say, we got to have somebody in that booth. Anybody coming to Pleasantville, when you run to the police department, you're going for help. If you got to pick your phone up, wait for dispatch, dance in front of whoever, I'm done. Who's at fault is the question. But not saying at fault, fault. I'm saying something needs to be fixed. It needs to be fixed fast, because from our prior conversations, it's been a while. Okay, now we got to that point, and now this took place. So man, business administrator, councilpeople, attorney, chief, you got to do something. Because you was this close to being sued. Because it was that close to dying.
Second favor.[1531.22]
Hi.
Who's that? Yes, you did.
Uh, now we have the council, the council, the council on the topic.
Yes, I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Um, congratulations again, Swanny, you retired and, and everyone have a safe and healthy holiday.
That's the woman, Fidelaro.
Merry Christmas to everybody. I heard something the other day that I just have to, somebody, there was a saying on a hospital wall in Africa. And when people die and they go to meet whoever you pray to, whoever you believe in, they say, show me your scars. And when the person says, I don't have any scars, the person says, wasn't there anything in your life to fight for? We all need something to fight for. We all need to make our town just a little bit better. Merry Christmas, Swanny, I'm going to miss you.
I just want to wish everybody a hard Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I just want to tell, you know, everybody here that it was great working with you and, uh, and, uh, you know, it was great, it was a great party.
Swanny, I want to say again, congratulations. Safe, Merry Christmas, and Merry Christmas to everybody, have a blessed and safe holiday.
Same here, guys. Merry Christmas, everybody. Uh, Happy New Year, Swanny will miss you, hopefully will get still some more. And now, as a council. Thank you. Yes, everybody, you have a happy and safe holiday. And Swanny, God bless you. Good luck.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. I'd like to say congratulations to Councilman Swann. I hope you'll have a happy retirement. I heard someone earlier say, um, uh, that, um, the businesses in Ocean City and what they do to, for their community to thrive. We don't have businesses like that in Pleasantville. We can't attract economic development in Pleasantville. And tonight, what happened with the spy glass project, as far as council voted, they voted their conscience. But that's something that if I had a vote, that I, I can't say that I would have abstained or voted no. And the reason is, is because no one has come here in so long, I mean, Scarborough is here, they're trying to, uh, you know, they're, the pilot, yes. Thirty years is a long time. Thirty, I, I, I agree with that. A five-year abatement wouldn't, it just wouldn't be feasible for them to build that way. And all I'm saying is that we need ratables and for the, uh, pilots that we have in the city right now are, they're better than what's at the property before. We need the ratables and I'm not saying for us to be a slave, for us to be anything lower than, lower in our standards. But at what point do we, at what point do we just get ratables in here? No one's coming knocking on our door. You know, the economic development and everything, we need all of that. And until we start, and, and Mr. Christmas was here earlier and he, everything that he said in a nutshell. We're getting a mod, uh, car wash. We have been working on the, um, the Scarborough for so long. And then we have other projects that don't, you know, that they're asking for pilots as well. Everyone's asking for pilots. And yes, Scarborough has done other projects in Summers Point and everything, and they all have, they all have pilots. You know, I'm not trying to compare us with Ocean City, uh, Northfield, Limwood or anything like that. But I'm just saying to you all that we're not the only ones that ask, you know, that's giving pilots. So we, as we try to, um, get ratables and do what we're doing and you all are here. And I just employ you to just know the whole story, know the whole story and figures and everything, rather than think that we're just giving everything away for no reason at all. Merry Christmas to everybody, I hope you have a fun, safe holiday with your families, God bless you all.
I really believe that everything has been said, um, wishing everyone a blessed, blessed, blessed Christmas holiday. Councilman Swann, congratulations on your retirement from public service. Um, you've been around for a very long time, you've been very instrumental, uh, to this community in more ways than many people even know. So congratulations and God bless you.
After sitting in this seat for such a long time. And we've done more than likely, what is it, about two hundred, two hundred million dollar projects in the city of Pleasantville over the past twenty years. A lot of times, poor communities, kind of building school systems, school, school districts and things of that nature, it's hard to build. You try to build, like, okay, who's going, who's going to send these kids to school there? So, you know, you're like caught between the rock and the hard place. It's just, it's just hard to do the development and it's hard to come up with a great deal. Um, it's, it's, um, and you just let your nose spite your face. If you sit back, let your nose spite your face, you won't have anything. It would be just a big old dust ball. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have had anything. Um, and that, shoot. You would have been just a big old dust ball, wouldn't have had anything. So this state, um, there are pilot programs, they exist. And our neighbors, they have pilot programs and they, and they move their communities forward, whether you like it or not. That's what they do. That's, that's what, that's the bottom line to, to what they do. And the demographics, the developers, they understand the demographic. They come in, they see a parcel of land that hasn't been developed and God knows when, you know. And they look and they say, okay, I can do that and I can probably get a great deal on that because they're not receiving the taxes from it. Uh, who is going to benefit from it? We're going to benefit. Because some of my money is better than a whole lot of none of my money. It doesn't bother, uh, this group to have a waterfront that has not been developed. Um, if you watch in those past twenty years since nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five, if you watch since nineteen ninety-five, the things that have taken place around you, communities and the things that they had done. Uh, like Atlantic City, that Rebel wasn't there, God wasn't there, Eric's building wasn't there. If you go back some time and everything, you didn't have the, the tunnel and things of that nature. We got to do what we got to do to make things and move things forward. We got, we got to have something, something to work with. We had to have the ability to move projects forward. And prior to, and prior to some, some people coming in on this administration, we, we moved projects forward. We did what was best for the city of Pleasantville. Whether you agree with it or not, we did what was best for the city of Pleasantville. So you can be proud to say, hey, this is what happened here. We got a bill over for electric, we got this project right here, we got that one that's sitting back here. If it was left up to, to some people, we wouldn't have nothing. Yep, it's just been a free spin, straight across Pleasantville and no builders to stop the spin. The bottom line of this, of this thing right now, we are set here to do what's best for the city of Pleasantville, even when you don't understand. I had to take a motion to.
I, I see Mr. Carrington sitting back there. Mr. Carrington, I want, I want to answer your question because you said before, who cares about the seniors and who cares about the, um, the youth? And that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to bring ratables in to be able to have more, uh, revenue for our youth and our ratables.